None of the lights are on. It sounds like it is on. Okay. I'll call to order the March 22nd, 2016 meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors, and we'll start with a flag salute led by County Council Jerry Carden.
.......................................................................................................................................................................................... Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, March 22nd, 2016. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. However, please note that the board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. When you speak, clearly state your name for the record, and be aware there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. Please place all cell phones in silent mode. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Okay, and I was asked to let you all know and the public know that Supervisor Montgomery is not with us today because he's attending Officer Taylor's funeral services in Roseville. And the consent item agenda is next. This is a list of items that are all supposed to be considered under one motion, but we're happy to pull any if the public wishes or if any of my colleagues wish, and we need to pull item 17E, which requires a budget amendment, and since there are not four of us here today, we cannot do that. We have to do it later. Although I'd lobby to be able to vote twice, but staff wouldn't let me do that then. So, is there anyone from the public who'd like anything else? Yes, please, come forward.
Do I just do it here?
No. Come onto the podium, please, and state your name. Thank you.
Good morning. Nanette Gordon, and I'm here representing the Brockway Homeowners Association. I know it's not on the agenda today, but we felt it was very important to have somebody here just representing items that were discussed last week up in Brockway, and I know that we have some of our members in Tahoe City listening in as well.
I'm sorry, is this an item on the consent agenda?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I think you probably want to speak during public comment.
I'll be back.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes.
Good morning, Placer County Board of Supervisors. My name is Chase Schweitzer, Field Representative for Sierra Watch. As part of the public plan process, we know you've been getting a lot of input on the proposed development of Squaw Valley, in addition to more than 300 comment letters.
I'm sorry, is this an item that's on our consent agenda?
No, this is for the public comment.
Then, we're not yet, we're already in public comment, that's right.
My apologies.
We will have public comment next. Anyone else who would like to address something on consent? The consent agenda. Pleasure of the board. Moved in second to approve the items on consent, minus 17E. Roll call, please.
Holmes?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes. Thank you. Next is the time for public comment, and I will note that there are a couple of people up in Tahoe, so we're not going to forget about you, but if I do forget between now and then, somebody will let me know, but please come forward now and state your name, and... These are for comments that are on i... For items that are not on the agenda.
Correct. Sorry about that earlier.
No problem.
Again, Nanette Gordon, and I'm representing the Brockway Homeowners Association, and we do have some members up in Tahoe City I know that might have comments after mine. So, I am here just to plead the case that we reconsider a couple of things as discussed last week when the Speedboat Beach Master Plan was introduced, and one of the... There were three main points that were discussed when we were presented with the option that this would happen, and that was that the community character would be protected. And I don't know if you all are familiar with Brockway, but it is quintessential to the character, the old character of Lake Tahoe. I myself have been a Tahoe owner for 50 years, and my family, and you'll find in this community, as many of the families are, they go back generations. And one of the things that drew me to Brockway 26 years ago was that these people really care about the character of Tahoe. Their families, and their families for many years, have ensured that the beaches, the lake, have been preserved to its best quality. And I state that upfront because it's not a new group in that wants to keep the masses out. They just really are concerned about the beauty of Tahoe. So, we were promised that the neighborhood would be respected, that our desires would be input into the proposal, and that there would be no increase in public use. And the presentation that was given last week, we feel, really did not take into account the group's interest, and there is a community of homeowners, and 100% of us do not like the proposal for the one-way streets that have been indicated in the master plan. We do like that you're increasing the fine option to cars that are blocking driveways, causing problems down there, blocking the roads for emergency vehicles. We do love the public bathrooms that you've put up to help ensure, and I want to just reiterate that this group is not into keeping the public out. We're just asking that you help us, help you, consider the best plan to preserve this community, so that those that come in can enjoy it as we all have, and that our area isn't impacted and that this area isn't ruined. So, that's my presentation in person, and I know you'll probably hear from some in Tahoe City. Thank you very much, and for all you do.
Oh, thank you. Next.
Good morning again. My name is Chase Schweitzer, Field Representative for Sierra Watch. As part of the public plan process, we know you've been gathering a lot of input on the proposed development of Squaw Valley, in addition to more than 300 comment letters on the draft environmental impact report, and the Keep Squaw True letter signed by more than 50 local businesses. Nearly 80 individuals have shared with us the letters they emailed you. We've compiled those letters for handy reference in the packets being submitted to you today. They come from all over the county, California, Nevada, and the country, with the concentration from the I-80 corridor and the Tahoe Sierra. Each pin on the map in the introduction of these packets represents one of those letters. The letters communicate personal commitment and deep appreciation for the region. A resident of Meadow Vista, for example, writes, "I've been a Placer County resident since 1985, and I'm proud to call this beautiful county home. We've raised our children here, and they have all chosen to return to this area to work and raise their families. I trust that your choice to be a supervisor also came from your love of our county." He goes on to point out, "I am very concerned that the KSL development is not appropriate for the setting they have chosen, and will be a detriment to all that is special about Tahoe. I respectfully request that you work with the community to create a plan that is better suited for our backyard in the Tahoe Sierra." As one of the 77 letters attached in this document, this constituent's voice adds to the overwhelming chorus of regulatory agencies, neighboring jurisdictions, local businesses, and individual citizens who join us in encouraging Placer County to reject KSL Capital Partners' proposed Village at Squaw Valley specific plan in order to pursue more develop... More responsible development for Squaw, for Placer County, and for the entire Sierra Nevada. Thank you very much, and have a good rest of your day.
Is there anyone else in Auburn who'd like to address the board during public comment?
Hello, I'm Victoria Connolly. I have a request that I don't know if you've already considered it, but when you... Is it possible to have a remote capability when you have meetings in Tahoe? For those of us down here in Auburn, particularly when there's an Auburn-related item or South County-related item on the agenda, it's, you know, for those of us afraid of traveling in snow, it's a little difficult. And I think in the interest of transparency, it's been lovely to have the Tahoe people be able to comment, but it would also be nice for those of us down here to be able to comment on items on the agenda when you have meetings in Tahoe. That's just a request for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the board on public comment? Okay, now we'll go up to Lake Tahoe where those... I know we have some people who want to address the board under public comment in Lake Tahoe.
Am I standing up?
Oh, just sit down.
Leave it... Okay.
Hello, my name is Dan Yori. I represent the Brockway Homeowners Association, and I'm making comments regarding the Speedboat Beach Master Plan. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak. We'd like to say that as the representative for the Brockway Homeowners that we have some comments. We appreciate the restrooms and the stair renovations that you folks want to do, and we're behind that 100%. The interpretive signage, we like every... All the designs that have been put in place, and we are happy to have those. The parking with the extended fines, we have no problem with the fees being more. Our big concern, though, is the one-way streets that you folks have proposed. My family has had a home in Brockway since the 20s on Speedboat Street, and to make Speedboat Street be one-way, going down to all the traffic and the unloading of people's boats and kayaks and unloading, just to go to the store and have to come back up Harbor, does not make any sense to have that much traffic being funneled down in to the heart of the problem. People coming up from Brockway Springs would have to take a right and go down that all the workers and the homeowners. People that are... That live on Wave Street cannot make that turn on Harbor coming up because it's too severe. Also, to address the Yacht Street one-way, I don't know if you folks have ever been there in the winter after we've had a couple of feet of snow and before the plows get there, but 80% of the people will go down Yacht Street the opposite way that you're proposing to go out to Cal-Neva because the roads haven't been plowed on the berms at the top of Speedboat and Harbor. I think funneling the people down to the congested area is a big mistake, and we would like you to reconsider that. We are not looking to keep people out of the beach. We love sharing the beach. I've been there my whole life, and I think the one-way street is something you folks ought to look at. We voted unanimous that we are not for it, and I think if you would just know the amount of traffic that's going to be funneled down in there and how embottled it is, you would understand. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you. And just for the public, the board will be up in Lake Tahoe on April 19th, and we will be addressing this. This item will be on the agenda when we're up there on the 19th.
Yeah, thank you, and we'll be... There'll be quite a few people from the Brockway Homeowners that would be more than happy to meet with you folks, and thank you again.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Royce Johnson from the Brockway Point Homeowners Association, also. I live at 61 Speedboat Avenue. I'm a third-generation resident of Brockway Point, and I'll reiterate what Dan said. I don't want to repeat everything, but I agree with everything he said with a couple of comments. One, the location... We're totally in favor of the restroom, but location of it will be an issue. Apparently, there's five spots that they have picked out. We didn't discuss that further at the meeting, but that will be something we'd like to put input into. The increased fine to $100 is a really good thing. That's a great idea. It will only work if it's enforced, and somehow we have to get the CHP and the Sheriff's Department to be communicating with each other or sharing the responsibility. I know they both have limited resources, and the way it's been for years, it's very hard to get any of them down there to tick it, and so hopefully we can figure out a way to get them working together and sharing the responsibility. There's really no good solution to the amount of traffic and the parking and all that. The way it is now, it's unacceptable. The one-way street would be totally unacceptable. That just will not work at all. Possibly, the amount of parking spaces could be figured out, and permits could be issued for them, limited amount of permits, and a remote parking area somewhere could be designated for people that would like to use the beach. The main problem is the amount of cars in Brockway. It cannot sustain that amount of cars. And then, further down, there will probably be an environmental issue on the beach. There probably needs to be a steady environmental study of the impact on Speedboat Beach. Anyway, thank you for taking time. Thank you for listening, and we'll be at the meeting.
Thank you for your comments. I think there's one other person.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. A mitigated neg deck was released yesterday for the Tahoe Expositionary Academy. It's going to be 350 students, 16 buildings, 679 daily trips. The Hopkins Ranch EIR approved affordable housing at the proposed site of 42 acres. It's going to have an approximate $223,000 impact fee just for traffic. I don't believe the mitigated negative deck is the proper environmental analysis level, and Supervisor Montgomery, although she's not here, is on record saying that she was concerned that the site for affordable housing should still be considered for affordable housing as they're few and far between, and we need to look at that. I will be making comprehensive comments on this, but wanted to bring to your attention that I do not believe that mitigated neg deck is the proper level of analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that everyone up in Lake Tahoe now? Is there anyone else?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close the public comment, and we will move on to Supervisor reports. Do any of my colleagues have committee reports? Okay, we'll take up our first department item, which is minutes of the February 23rd meeting, which need to be taken up because one of Supervisor Montgomery was absent. Moved in second to approve the minutes of the February 23rd meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And our next department item is Human Resources, creation of Deputy Director Human Resources Classification. Lori and Rick, welcome back, Rick, in a different role.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CEO Bosch, and County Council Carden. I'm Lori Walsh, the Director of Human Resources, joined by Rick Ward, who is our Chair for the Civil Service Commission, and we are very appreciative of this opportunity to come and report to your board on the status and progress of the creation of the HR Department. You'll recall that it was just a short six months ago when your board approved the formal creation of the department in October 2015, which would merge the programs and staff previously in the CEO's office, which included workers' compensation, safety, training and OD, leave management, labor relations, and employee relations, such as the employee engagement program. So, over the last six months, we have been working diligently, all of the staff, between the risk management folks that came from the CEO's office and the personnel department staff. We have created a new department mission, and I'd like to read to you the mission statement that the staff have arrived at. "We strive to deliver innovative services as a strategic partner, empowering county departments to deliver exemplary services to our residents, visitors, and employees." We also created core values to guide how we'll work together, and have identified a workplace culture that's committed to integrity, communication, work-life balance, partnership, and innovation. Further, we initiated a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, that will help us to identify the types of innovative initiatives that we can embark upon so that we can streamline and improve our service delivery. In the next six months, we plan to bring all the staff together to the second floor of the annex. We'll be working side by side, anticipating opportunities to further streamline and identify efficiencies in the way that we work together. We'll continue to define and refine the HR Department's vision, and we will begin to finalize the strategic plan, which will be a part of that SWOT analysis and the initiatives derived from that effort, by exploring the initiatives with our external stakeholders and affirming and confirming that we are going to meet the needs of... The operational needs of our customers by aligning with what their reported requirements are as well. So, as part of the department's development and evolution, the organizational structure is coming into more clear view. We now identify that we have two functional operations or divisions, and I believe that you have a chart that's been provided to you. You'll see that on one side of the House, if you will, we have a strategic support operation, which is responsible for the oversight of fiscal practices and internal controls, contracts, technology, and HRIS systems, benefit and payroll administration, and labor costing. Part of the SWOT analysis has identified initiatives that need to be embarked upon sooner than later, and those would include an evaluation of all benefit plans and providers, including an evaluation of those cost drivers and comparison of rates, opportunities for outsourcing administration of a few of our programs, such as the Flexible Spending Plan, COBRA administration, and others, an assessment of technology and opportunities for enhancement to improve service delivery. There are more and more ways to streamline and automate, and we just need to really identify those projects and start to work on them diligently, and further assessing benefit program administration for other jurisdictions such as special districts. The Human Resources Services Division on the other side of the House would have oversight of labor and employee relations, performance management and disciplinary actions, recruitment and retention strategies, policy and procedure oversight to make certain that we're in compliance with MOU, other legislative requirements, training and organizational development, including employee engagement activities. The specific projects that we see needing to be addressed sooner than later for that side of the House include developing and maintaining a comprehensive labor strategy across all employee groups, monitoring legislative or MOU impacts to policies and procedures, and creating learning and development opportunities countywide for staff, such as a countywide mentoring program, enhanced employee onboarding, development of educational cohorts, and curriculum development for staff to pursue specific career opportunities, not to mention utilization of social media for greater outreach to qualified applicants. You can see that there's a whole host of programs and activities we are really anticipating being able to begin to address, and it's the organizational structure that we bring to you today and the request that's before your board today in approving the creation of the Deputy Director of HR that we would ask for you to consider. I can report that the Civil Service Commission met on March 14th to review the structure and did unanimously support this recommendation. The Chair of the Commission, Rick Ward, is here if you'd like to offer a few comments.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors, and I'd like to first comment on the foresight that the Board of Supervisors had to consolidate these different departments, such as Personnel as well as Workman's Comp and all the other units, to make it a more efficient, fluent organization that better serves the county as well as the citizens within Placer County. So, my commendations to you guys for having that foresight to bring that together. But at the... We're at the moment now where the HR is merging together with all these other departments and units, and the other day, the Office of the CEO's Office as well as HR came before the Civil Service Commission, and as you know, one of the responsibilities of the Civil Service Commission is the oversight of personnel issues within Placer County. They brought to us the Deputy Director's position for Human Resources. We looked at it to see if that's a proper classification, if that fits within their structure within Placer County, and would that be a benefit to the citizens as well as to Placer County that went in there. As you see in that ORC chart that you have in front of you, there is a missing component that hasn't been developed yet for Human Resources, and that's the Deputy Director's position. They're missing that little element, and by bringing that together, I feel that they can enhance what they're currently doing. As most of you know, I worked for the state for many years. I've traveled up and down the state of California, and I can tell you that by far, Placer County is part of the best well-run county that I've had the opportunity to work in, and one of the reasons is due to the Board of Supervisors, but mainly to the workers and employees that you have in Placer County. I've seen that in the bringing together of the Human Resources, them coming together, working together with a common goal of serving the citizens of Placer County. So, after they brought that to our commission, we looked at it and felt that that was an appropriate step for them to do, is to create a Deputy Director position within Human Resources. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, anyone from the public like to address this item? Any comments or direction from the board?
This was an anticipated Placer... Or move after we consolidated part of the... Part of the Human Resources Department. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think Lori did a nice job of kind of summarizing how we got to this point and the ongoing strategic planning effort that she's embarked upon with both the Commission as well as my office in support, and I think this is an outgrowth of that work. They've realized that as they begin to shore up areas that need additional capacity, that by creating these two deputy-level positions, that that will really give them the horsepower they need to really continue down that pathway and to actually accelerate the achievement of some of those important goals that have been identified already.
Okay. Thank you.
Pleasure of the board.
I want to have the motion include approving the job specification that's attached to the staff report.
Motion by Duran, second by Holmes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks for... Good to see you again, Rick.
Nice to see you.
Our next item, Public Works under Department Items, is Capital Improvements Division Consultant Services Agreement with Williams plus Patton. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Wygant, for the Supervisors. My name is Paul Grekner. Senior Architect with the Department of Public Works and Facilities. Very glad to be here to discuss the master plan update to the 1993 Comprehensive Facilities Master Plan, providing long-term... Long-term vision for capital improvements at the Placer County Government Center. Here today with me is Jack Patton, representing Williams and Patton, our recommended master planning consultant. I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a moment, but I want to give a little bit of background here before we jump into kind of the specifics of the master plan update. Back in June of 2015, we were here before the board to talk about previous Government Center history, where we had been at that point and getting to this point, talked about some of the planning policy and some of the significant campus improvements that came out of the 1993 Comprehensive Facility Master Plan. We identified that the... There was a significant need to update that plan at that point. It was sunsetted in 2011 as per that plan, so we're back here to push ahead with the update for that. From there, we got... We had some input. We presented some of the update scope at that point. In the process, we obtained some feedback from the board, and we pushed ahead from there. So, DPW and Facilities went ahead with next steps, including solicitation for master planning services, which is where we are today. We also went out to the community. We went out to the various max that are associated with our... In the surrounding area, talked to the community, talked to the boards there, gained some good feedback, also took signup sheets. So, we did gather names and interest for folks that wanted to hear more about the master plan moving ahead. So, we've got a good database for those in the area that do want to hear more about the master plan moving ahead. So, as far as the... One of the next steps was going out to find our master planning consultant. We went through... consultant. We went through the county selection process, went to an RFP process, had a lot of interest. We narrowed down to three finalists. We had a group that consisted of, the interview panel consisted of county representatives plus a North Auburn MAC community member. We interviewed and found that Williams and Patton Architects and Planners was found to be the most qualified. The, we then entered into negotiations with them and spent a good deal of time making sure that the depth and breadth of the, the master plan scope, that we verified that, that we were, we had what we needed to in the master plan moving ahead. So the action requested today is to approve the Williams and Patton Consultant Service Agreement for the Placer County Government Center Master Plan Update. And as part of that, one of the bigger items is, under the project scope, is land use planning. So as we move ahead, we're, one of the major things is to identify county needs and then beyond that, the private land use needs, once we do determine what the extent of the county needs are. So identifying what those bigger zones, if you will, on the campus are for those two bigger elements of the puzzle. We also have obviously the, the Duitt General Hospital buildings that are on campus here that now have now moved to a national registry designation that we'll be looking at and evaluating too. So another layer on the master planning effort, if you will. Want to remind the Board that back in October of 2015, that the, there was a approval to move ahead with exclusive negotiating agreement with Costco Wholesale Corporation. So that will play into, potentially play into the efforts as well as we move ahead. Back in December of last year, the, the Board approved an agreement to go ahead with Health and Human Services programming effort for a new building that will potentially play into the master planning effort here on the campus as well. We may have, as part of the multi-generational community center feasibility study, one of the options has to do with a potential placeholder here, or placeholder at the PCGC, so that may play into the efforts as well. And additionally, we may have a placeholder for, yeah, the services here at Full Wyler. So there may be a potential placeholder set aside, if you will, at the campus for, yeah, or the, the items here at this campus. That was called for in the 93 plan, just basically hadn't been accomplished at that point, so we'll see how that goes with the, the master planning effort. The estimated timeline is, we're looking at about 18 months, looking to complete all the various tasks, summer of 2017. Our project funding, our overall project cost is $2.6 million over two years. Million and a half of that is currently available and the remainder would be recommended, funded for the following budget year. The 2.1 million for the Williams and Patton contract is inclusive of all the various scope items, including a, I want to stipulate that, that is included is a program-level EIR, so it does include a, an extensive EIR process there. It may change over time. We'll see how it goes depending on the various components that come into play, but the master planning effort is structured to allow some variation with how the EIR is, is looked So to orient you to the map here, this is the entirety of the Government Center campus, Bell Road to the top of the page and Atwood to the, the lower side of the page. We are looking at the full 200 acres of the campus here. So, you know, including the, the existing framework that we do have with the Auburn Justice Center, Community Development Resource Center, the New Animal Services Center, and the Community Development Resource, that, those are all, or the Finance Admin Bill, I'm sorry, that those have all played into and are the foundational framework for our work moving ahead. Those were all identified in the 93 plan and have been accomplished since that. So we're taking that framework and moving ahead. Some of the larger recommended master plan elements, kind of starting at the big picture, the campus vision, so that'll be one of the main exercises out of the gate is to establish what the, the overall look is moving ahead. The context, site and facilities assessment, utilization, looking at our existing buildings and where we need to head to in, into the future with those existing uses, all the various planning items, transportation. One of the bigger items is just looking at utilities. We know that the infrastructure dates back to, many of it, much of it dates back to World War II, so that's going to be a major part of the effort here at the master plan. Economic development study, site and facilities planning guidelines. One of the major items that we've introduced on the energy side is looking at planning for zero net energy and zero net water, looking into the future, that we know our campus does want to be a demonstration of both energy and water savings for the county and just as far as where codes are becoming more energy and water efficient, we'll need to adjust to that over the next 20, 25 years. So we're going to be looking at what our carbon impacts are and plan on those things in the master plan for our buildings and our campus into the future. And then finally, a phasing and implementation plan. So what are the, what's the rollout process and what are the associated costs with that for the, the many, many elements associated with the plan? Community engagement will be a large piece of the puzzle as we, as we move ahead, and we did learn that through the MAC meetings, that there is some good interest, and so we want to make sure that we're engaging the, not just the North Auburn area, but the community in general, plus our, you know, what is our 1,800, potentially more employees at the campus too, that those are very much part of the stakeholder group that we're looking to engage. Working with the PIO, the Public Information Office, looking at a communications plan that we do reach out on several levels, whether it's on the webs, county website or beyond. We've got kind of a plethora or a long list of community workshops and meetings that we'll be engaging the pub, public, one of which is our first community workshop that we'd like to announce that we're going to have on April 19th at 5:30 PM at the Community Development Resource Center. So we'll be reaching out to the community, make sure that the advertisement on that moves ahead if, if we get the go-ahead today. Our MAC will be checking in mainly with the North, North Auburn MAC being that that's the closest group that's associated with the campus, lots of jurisdictional partners, community groups that we've identified we'll be reaching out to as well. The secret process, the environmental process, will have mandated public outreach as well, so we'll be obviously following through with those elements of the puzzle, and then checking back in with you at milestones for, you know, vetting options and getting direction moving ahead. So our recommended contract, Williams and Patton Architects and Planners, very experienced and it was very apparent as, as we went through the selection process that they're ready for this project and their, their background and experience is situated very well for us to, to, to move ahead and have a successful project. Their extended consultant team, based on the, the complexities associated with this project, we've got a long list, as you can see, of kind of the extended group that covers many of the infrastructural issues, economic development, the transportation planning associated with either planning or on the environmental side, cost estimating, Earth and Associates is handling our energy and water planning, and DUDEC is our environmental consultant, which I, I'm not sure if there's another group in the area that knows more about our campus, both on the cultural side, on the historic side, but also on the, the environmental side. Williams and Patton design the Community Resource Development Center, and so they've, they've been on our campus, they know our campus, and they're, they're ready to go. So with that, I'd like to open it up to questions.
Thank you. Jim?
Two questions. First of all, was the Community Development Resource Center, was it awarded any awards statewide or?
There were, a, there was an AIA Design Award for that, so I think even beyond that, there probably were others.
So, so yes, we did receive a AIA Award for it, probably the, less heralded, but when it was designed, it was designed to be 45% more efficient than current Title 24, but it operated in the first few years at over 50% more efficient than the current Title 24. That was at the time it was built, so it's very much part of our thinking is to, to look, be even aspirational towards reducing demand on energy and, and water systems, as Paul mentioned.
Having lived in North Auburn all my life so far, traffic is a major concern for the residents and the businesses out there in the circulation, so when this master plan study is done, is that going to encompass the wider region than just the, the Government Center? So all the potential growth in North Auburn will be addressed? Is that going to be part of this study?
Yeah, Farr and Pierce has, has identified a larger area in which to, to review the, the impacts associated, and we may adjust it over time depending on where we need to, to go with things, but yeah, they've identified kind of a larger area context in which to, to analyze where we're going with the traffic.
Supervisor Holmes, if I could just mention that one of our thoughts will be looking to have services available on campus, public and private, daycare, cleaners, you know, shopping, so trips don't have to be made up, made midday off, on and off campus. So really looking at optimizing all modes of transportation and minimizing trips that would typically be made or, or may be currently made to and from campus during the middle part of the day.
Thank you. Jack?
Yeah, no, I'm pleased, I, I'm very familiar with the Williams and Patton Firm. On the subject of awards, in my opinion, awards are a bonus. The primary concern for me is to build a building that is, number one, cost-effective, number two, does what we need it to do, and number three, is of value to the public. So that's, you know, awards are great, but, you know, when it comes down to it, if we're going to be writing a check for it, it's got to be functional. So I appreciate the fact that you put your, your, your spin on it or your take on it to build a building that could win an award, but that's not my, that's not my concern. All right? Okay.
Question I have, Paul, jurisdictional partners, having lived through other master facility plan updates, early on, before we had built our South Placer Justice Facility and relocated some of our facilities like HHS, which is predominantly now in Rockland, there was a lot of discussion and desire to make sure that we, what I would describe, coming from the private sector, I guess, but as an analogy for government, that we tended to want to have more of our retail facilities to the fullest extent possible in proximity to our population, but the Duitt was going to be more of our corporate headquarters, if you will, knowing that there was going to be some overlap and exceptions. But, so we've done some great work, I think, with having some of our facilities amplified or relocated in South Placer to the benefit of all of us, but particularly our city partners. Bookings and court attendances and those kinds of things are much more cost-effective for them, not having to travel all the way up to Duitt and particularly in, in attending some of the court facilities that were horribly antiquated. So with all of that, it sounds like you have reached out to our city partners and there's good dialogue there, but I wanted you to comment on that and make sure that we are following.
And we will, and, and I've already, I've started, I've got actually a very good dialogue currently on the Multi-Generational Community Center with City of Auburn, with the, the folks there. So I'll be extending that and talking with them in particular as this moves along. So yeah, I'll be reaching out to them, and I, actually, I've got a fairly long list of folks that will be considering and looking to for feedback and input moving ahead, not just City of Auburn.
Right. So even just to comment, and then I'm going to open up to the public for sure, so everybody has a chance, but just to start off, for me, going through this iteration of an update, if you will, I, I really like the idea and the promise, I guess, of, of this notion that's being articulated now with this camp, campus development. So Jack, look forward to working with you as we kind of brainstorm. So whereas, I think we have some nice buildings and one of them that's award-winning for sure, to have that notion, to sort of have an award-winning campus, if you will, what is, what, what, what are all of the synergistic benefits that come from that as it relates to even being an amenity to the community? Obviously, provide better housing for our employees so that they can be more productive, interface better with the public, and, and just be a beautiful setting, that's something that lasts us in perpetuity. I want to make sure we look at all of that potential, so I'm, I'm really excited about that. With that, I'll open it up to the public now for any comments that anyone might have or wish to make. Please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Charlene Daniels, and I'm a resident of North Auburn. I have the following comments that are important to raise early in any planning, in the planning process of any master plan update. First, concerns in 1993 Comprehensive Facility Master Plan. The purpose of this plan was to analyze the most appropriate sites in Placer County for locating facilities. It concluded that facilities should be located at Duitt with exception of satellite facilities at Tahoe and South Placer. At the time the 93 plan was approved, it identified surplus land at Duitt and suggested that the land could be used for commercial housing and or preserve. The county's surplus land at that time was zoned farm, open space and heavy commercial. The county never processed a community plan amendment or a rezoning to implement the 93 plan. An environmental document was never prepared to analyze the potential impacts of the 93 plan. Therefore, it is important to note that this 93 plan is more of a conceptual plan than a land development plan. But in 1994, the Auburn Bowman Community Plan was adopted, and specific to Duitt, it included a mixed-use land use designation and zoning to implement the 93 plan. Mixed use is a pedestrian-friendly, well-designed, low-traffic generating community concept, not intended for large, originally focused, commercial uses. The, the community plan also adopted commercial office and open space zoning at, for Duitt. Zoning is a tool that is used to implement the land use of an adopted plan. Unfortunately, it seems that the focus has only been on the zoning at Duitt disregarding the mixed-use concept. Also, there appears to be an impression that regional commercial has been planned at Duitt for over 20 years. Again, we'd recommend the county make a concentrated effort to correct this impression. Again, there are county documents that should be provided to the consultant, again, I didn't see it on the RFP, and maybe they have, but some of these important documents would include the Auburn Bowman Community Plan and the Background Report, the Placer County Design Guidelines Manual, the Housing Element and Background Report. Again, as part of the materials that was submitted in the RFP, there was a PowerPoint presentation, and I just wanted to point out on, on one of the slides, and one of particular concern, there was a slide that actually included a commercial land use policy that pretty much stated you were to encourage commercial land uses that are regional in character. Again, this is a commercial land use policy and not a mixed-use, uh, land use policy, and therefore, they're, they're very separate and distinct land uses, and I believe this may create some confusion on what is appropriate in mixed use and what is inappropriate in the commercial land use designation. But, but finally, I like, I appreciate the public outreach that the county is taking in, with this plan and the list of consultants. There are some very good notable consultants that, that Williams and Patton will be hiring, so that's, that's a very positive thing to see in this.
Thank you, Charlene.
Victoria Connolly, I live in the City of Auburn. The RFP itself specifically called out for provision of the development of a roadmap for the site, including a framework for strategic development based on county policy to include opportunities for best utilizing commercially zoned properties. Emphasis on commercial development. It's silent regarding affordable or workforce housing as delineated in other county policy defining documents such as the General Plan or the Auburn Bowman Community Plan. Task 2.4 in the RFP required a commercial market study, looking at the growing jobs, but again, ignoring the needs of the workforce to have housing near those jobs, creating a violation of policy as delineated in the housing element of the community plan. The 1999 fiscal impact analysis for the community plan found an oversupply of non-residential land in the community plan area stating that sites are counted as having capacity are those that are most suitable for residential development. There is an oversupply of commercially designated land and therefore increased capacity for residential uses on commercial land. residential uses on commercial land. The county plan policy 1M3 states, "The county shall encourage creation of primary wage earner jobs on, or housing which meets protected income levels in those areas of Placer County where an imbalance of jobs and housing exists." The community plan housing element notes that the plan area has jobs/housing imbalance. There were insufficient jobs to support the workforce, but there also lacked an important match between job holders' housing needs at prices commensurate with their wages. Noted higher paying jobs were needed to support the expensive residences and more lower-cost housing to support the lower income jobs in the area. The DeWitt Center has had a mixed-use designation. A look at the community plan map, DeWitt map scenarios show residential areas outlined in the mixed-use designation. Finally, as is the case in most communities, we have a housing problem. The RFP fails to address critical use of affordable housing. Lack of housing is a primary consider, contribution to homelessness and shelters do not constitute permanent housing. This is to respectfully request you ensure that the selected applicant is charged with abiding by all Placer County policies in order to achieve a well-balanced and healthy community. And just, I will submit this to you, but all of these little polka dot areas that you see, these more open ones, are areas that had been designated as residential. And I submit this to you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address this item? Please come forward, state your name.
Ramona Brockman from Loomis, California. And first I want to thank Mr. Breckenridge for touching on some of the concerns in your presentation today, and I wish that actually some of that information would have been in the staff report that was submitted on today's agenda so that the public would have had more accurate information when reviewing the agenda item for today. So some of the comments that I have relate to what was visible on the RFP information and the staff report for today's agenda item. And on the RFP, in, in the memo for today, the master plan update references, references a commu, commercial market study, preparing, only a commercial market study for areas identified for private land uses in development zones would be out of compliance with the Surplus Land Act and probably the Auburn Bowman Community Plan mixed-use land designation. Private commercial land use, such as the Home Depot that was mentioned, is really not in compliance with the Surplus Land Act. The Surplus Land Act requires that public land be declared surplus before it is sold or leased for other uses, and that first priority land uses as directed by the Surplus Land Act are for affordable housing and/or recreation. Based on this information, the county's negotiations, as mentioned with Costco, are immature at, at this point, and premature. Therefore, I would really like clarification on how the updated master plan will address housing, recreation, and community services in addition to appropriately scaled commercial development in areas designated as private land use zones. The staff report also notes that the modern structures that were constructed here at the DeWitt Center, and it alludes that these structures were replacing World War II era buildings, and that's only the case for the Odo Finance Building and the Cedra Building. All the other construction was, takes, has been taken place on the periphery of the DeWitt Center. And so many of those buildings at DeWitt did not need to come down and in fact, were not identified in an EIR for being demolished. So that is a bit misleading to the public that, that these DeWitt historic structures were being replaced with, with new construction on top. And then I also wanted to note that in the RFP, of course, that was put out before the historic designation was official, but your staff memo did fail to mention that the DeWitt General Hospital is now placed on the National Register, and I wanted to make sure that that is well-informed for the community to know about. Just real quick, in summary, the county's treatment of historic hospital buildings should no longer be considered an inconvenience or afterthought. The DeWitt General Hospital is a legitimate and important cultural resource that belongs to the residents of Placer County, and it should be recognized and treated as such. The DeWitt hospital property is public land that has served the community throughout its unique and important history. Placer County has been the stewards of this property for the last 30 years, and the people of Placer County deserve and expect the county to be a good steward in the future. With little imagination and planning, the DeWitt General Hospital buildings could have great potential to continue serving their community in a meaningful and economically viable way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address this item?
Good morning. My name is Eleanor Potuski and I'm from Newcastle, and I'm very happy to see the master plan being updated. It sounds like we're now actually moving forward in a proper manner. I see the government center as the, you know, providing the needs of the county for their services, but I also see it as a great opportunity for Placer County to do something that feeds the soul of the community. And I went to a lot of the meetings on the senior, the intergenerational community center that's being proposed, and they talked about Parkside Church, they talked about near Rock, Rock Creek School, and they talked about the DeWitt Center, and everybody there, everybody there, maybe with the exception of a few people, wanted that at the DeWitt Center. I see the DeWitt Center as a town site, as a community center. I see the buildings, the historical buildings as potential studios for art and all kinds of uses. I see the potential of an art community there. The City of Auburn has worked very hard trying to make Auburn an art destination. Mike Holmes has been very involved with this, and I think Placer County can partner with the city to use this property to enhance that dream. And that is a big tourist attraction, a big tourist attraction, and it would be lovely. Public gardens, sculpture gardens, walkways, coffee houses, restaurants, galleries, a theater, a community center. I mean, it would be awesome. And that's what I see. And I also want to, I'm very concerned about the traffic that the big boxes cause. I listened to the presentation on the telephone with the Transportation Center and Transportation people, and Jim was there as well. They were talking about 8065, they were talking about Rockland exit and Loomis exit, and back in the background was mentioned 49, and I assume that was 49 in Bell Road. And with, you already, you got Walmart going in, you're talking about more boxes near Target, you have Smart and Final and all that and Home Depot. It's time to do something for the people, and I think a building like Costco and big boxes like that belong on the highway, like they are down at Sierra College. So I would like to see Placer County do something that would make the whole area proud and be a town center for North Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address this item from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action, and the request of us is to consider approval of the agreement with Williams Plus Patton Architects in the amount of $2,145,000, eight, eight hundred dollars. No sense.
I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding the former site of the Bell Gardens apartment, is that going to be, that's on the east, the east side of the Cedra Building and the north side of the campus. Is that going to be part of the study, that particular parcel?
Absolutely.
And that, to me, that should be set aside for some kind of an affordable housing apartment or some kind of housing. The infrastructure's there, it was used for that purpose, you know, before we tore them down, so I think it would be a good idea to keep that in mind when we make this study. And any other sites that may be available for that type of housing, because there is a shortage of affordable housing in North Auburn.
Yeah, we actually have, there's one small parcel that's currently zoned as residential way down on the south side, so, and we haven't ruled anything out yet.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
It's moved in second to approve the contract as discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you. We will now go to our first timed item, which is a proclamation declaring April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And I have the proclamation here, so let me read that, and I'll bring it down to you and turn it over to you. Whereas all adults and caregivers have a responsibility as neighbors, community members, and citizens of Placer County to help create healthy, safe, and nurturing experiences for children and youth, whereas safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident, successful, and independent adults, whereas child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in isolated stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope, whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable, when our communities are supportive, active, and engaged, whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure every family has the support it needs and deserves to raise their children in a healthy environment, whereas effective prevention programs succeed because of the partnerships among agency schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and Placer County's collaborative is among the most efficient in the country, and whereas for 27 years, Kids First, Child Abuse Prevention Agency comprised of two family resource centers located in Roseville and Auburn, has served the Sierra Sacramento region as a Child Abuse Prevention Council. Whereas wearing a blue ribbon or displaying a pinwheel in April will serve as a positive reminder that together we can prevent child abuse and keep children safe. Additionally, in 2016, we declare April 8th Wear All Blue Day, and strongly encourage county employees, child-serving agencies to wear blue, display blue pinwheels on that day. Therefore, it be proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of Placer County on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regularly held meeting today.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chairman Weigant, board members, Mr. Bosch, Mr. Carden, Twyla Abrahamson for the Children's System of Care.
Thank you. I'm going to interrupt your call.
Absolutely.
Give me a pinwheel. A bunch of them.
Thank you very much. So now that we've actually read the proclamation, thank you so much for passing that. Here today with me is Barbara Basana, the Executive Director for Kids First, and she will also have a couple of comments. We just wanted to say that Placer County Health and Human Services and the Children's System of Care work collaboratively with a number of community partners to both prevent and treat child abuse and neglect, including our Family Resource Centers, Tahoe Truckee Community Collaborative, law enforcement, faith-based organizations, and others. Chief among these is Kids First, who for nearly 27 years has led local efforts to raise awareness about child abuse and neglect, educate the community, and has delivered a variety of services which assist and support Placer's family in creating healthy and nurturing homes in which children can thrive. The month of April is National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and Placer County desires to support Kids First and all allied community partners in raising awareness and providing education to the community regarding the most effective methods to prevent child abuse. As the proclamation stated, we would also like to encourage all employees, Board of Supervisor members, and other county partners to wear blue ribbons the first full week of April and wear all blue on April 8th. So thank you again very much for approving the proclamation, and I'll turn it over to Barbara.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara Basana, Kids First Executive Director, Counseling and Family Resource Center. To begin with, I want to thank you. We have a pinwheel starter kit for you and pinwheel pins to get you started. And I want to add my thanks, because it takes a community to raise a child, and we at Kids First want to thank you for being partners for over 27 years. It is not by accident that we have made a difference in the lives of children and families. We've done this with the help of Children's System of Care within the county, the support from the County Board of Supervisors. We have the Placer Sheriff's Athletically, which we partner in after-school programs. We've partnered with probation on school attendance review board, and also first five commission in the programs that make a critical difference in the lives of our children. And with the communities, we are able to serve over 6,900 individuals, 3,800 of those being children. We partner with family resource centers such as Lighthouse and North Tahoe Collaborative, as well as the other allied agencies, to make a difference in the lives of our children. Additionally, on April 6th, Dutch Brothers had joined with Kids First, and every drink that's purchased that day, a portion will be donated back to the support of child abuse prevention activities. So we encourage you to plant your pinwheel garden. There's additional pinwheel garden supplies available at Kids First to encourage others to do that, and we just want to thank you again for the support that makes it possible to make a life and a change and a difference of families and children. Thank you.
We will now move on to our 10 o'clock timed item, Health and Human Services Federal Funding for Placer County Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. Excuse me. Before we do that, thank you, Jerry, we need to adjourn as Placer County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Placer County Public Housing Authority.
Thank you, and good morning Chairman Weigant. Susan Kimbley from the Human Services Division and the Public Housing Authority. And this morning I have Nancy Rhea, she's a supervisor with our Public Housing Authority. Excuse me. We come before the Board of Commissioners this morning to request your consideration to secure $2,138,001 in federal funding for the Placer County Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program for this next fiscal year. This funding provides subsidized housing vouchers for up to 297 low-income individuals, families, and veterans in Placer County. We're asking you today to conduct a public hearing, to receive public comment regarding the updated Placer County Housing Authority Administrative Plan, adopt the updated Placer County Housing Authority Administrative Plan, and to adopt a resolution authorizing acceptance of that plan and authorizing submission of certifications of program compliance to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is a federal program assisting very low-income families, the elderly, veterans, the disabled, to afford decent, safe, and sanitary housing in the private market. We operate a Housing Choice Voucher Program. It's not limited to units and subsidized housing projects, and it allows participants to choose their own housing, including single-family homes, townhomes, and apartments, provided they meet the program requirements. The program currently assists 556 Placer County residents. The Housing Choice vouchers are administered through funds received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Because the Housing Authority is in its sixth year as a high-performing housing authority, we are now considered a qualified housing authority and exempt from the requirement to submit an annual plan. We do need to still conduct the public hearing, have our plan available for public comment 45 days before that hearing, and to make all information relevant to the hearing regarding any changes to the goals, objectives, and policies of the agency to be considered at that hearing and available for public inspection. We're also required to submit a civil rights certification to our local head office. Changes to the administrative plan this year include recognition that the Housing Authority has been determined a high-performing housing authority for its sixth year. We've added in addition of a preference for our veterans. This is separate from our VASH voucher program. It allows a secondary method for our veterans to be able to gain a preference for admission to the list. We also would like to add the ability for the Housing Authority to open its waiting list on an annual basis. We currently We currently open the list, accept a predetermined number of applicants, and the list remains in effect until we have exhausted all of those applicants. By opening it on an annual basis, we hope to reach those that are most interested and available to secure housing. There were also some minor updates to HUD regulations, which were minor wording and clarification. The updated plan was noticed in newspapers in Auburn, Rockland, and Lincoln, and made available for review online and at the Housing Authority Office in Auburn for 45 days prior to this public hearing. At this point, no public comments have been received. Any comments from the hearing before your board will be included in the final plan document. Compliance with the, with the plan requirements are necessary to continue to receive federal funding for fiscal year 1617. Again, no county general funds are required. And with that, I would ask your Board of Commissioners to open up the public hearing and subsequently approve our request.
Before that, any questions by board members? See none? With that then, this is a public hearing, and I will open the hearing currently. If anyone from the public would like to address this item. See none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. We need to adopt the updated Placer County Housing Authority Administrative Plan and adopt the resolution that's included.
I have a question, Mr.?
Yes.
How many are on the waiting list? Is there any idea, do we know how many?
Right now, we have approximately 200 applicants on our waiting list.
Okay, thank you. I'll move approval with the chair.
Second. Motion homes, second Duran, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and congratulations on the high-performing designation for the sixth year.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, we will now move on to our 10:10 timed item, which, oh, thank you. We are adjourning as the Placer County Public Housing Authority and reconvening as the Placer County Board of Supervisors. Thank you. And we will now hear from Sidra, Secondary Dwelling Unit Housing Zoning Text Amendments and Fee Exemption Ordinance.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board, E.J. Valdi with the Planning Services Division. Joining me today is Crystal Jacobson, who will be giving a presentation on this item.
Morning Crystal.
Good morning. So the item before you today is a proposal to amend the zoning code, as well as Chapter 15, related to secondary dwelling units. The zoning code is Chapter 17, and then the development fee exemption is a proposal in Chapter 15. So the purpose of this is really to implement the county's housing element, which your board approved in 2013, and specifically is implementing a couple of different programs. Programs B-10, which is that the county shall explore the possibility of streamlining the approval process for second units, as well as allowing these units on smaller parcels. Specifically, it says that the county shall adopt new rules to allow second units on parcels less than 10,000 square feet in size. And then also Program B-6, which is an impact fee waiver and fee deferral for affordable housing.
It is on when the mute button disappears?
Program? I'm hearing something.
I think that's Lake Tahoe, I apologize. We have a.
I'm hearing it.
The lake.
Something in my ears. So this, this program really states that the county shall consider impact mitigation fee waivers for special needs housing, and deed restricted affordable second units. So it's looking for opportunities to waive fees, which is why we're bringing forward the fee, the development fee exemption that is proposed. So in terms of the scope of what, of what we have done here, we have defined multi-generational housing, which I'll talk about shortly. We have reduced the allowable lot size to 5,000 square feet for second units, clarified some parking requirements within the code. We are maintaining all other development standards related to setbacks, square footage limitation, those kinds of development standards. And then we have also, as I just noted, established a development fee exemption for secondary units that are deed restricted for affordability. In terms of the definition, the secondary dwelling unit definition is commonly known as an in-law suite, a granny flat, or an accessory apartment, or a guest unit. It's a second permanent dwelling that is intended to be accessory to the primary dwelling unit on a, on the same site. It may, may either be attached or detached and provides a complete independent living facility, so it has its own kitchen and bathroom. Very different than a guest or poolhouse, which is separately defined in our ordinance. Those are units that are exclusive, they're, they're separate to a primary unit, but they're, they exclude a kitchen or bathroom facility, so they're not intended to be a living, a living facility.
Does, does this apply to existing facilities?
Um, yes, yeah, existing development, yes.
So it's not just moving forward with new development?
No, if somebody, well, for, it would not apply to existing secondary units, so, but it would apply to existing developed lots that wanted to come in and build a second unit on there.
Okay, so if somebody has a unit on their house already, they'd have to go through planning department to get that approved for use as a secondary unit, is that correct?
If it was built without the benefit of a permit, they would have to go through.
But if it's permitted, then it would be grandfathered in?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So this is really in response, the proposal before you is in response to some change, changing trends, the need to offset cost of home ownership, the, the change in, the boomerang kids, as we call them, the, the kids that are staying, living at home as they attend college perhaps, aging relatives, they need to address onsite areas for folks to live onsite as they age, and then increase in small households, including young adults and seniors. And then what we see is the benefits is an efficient use of the existing housing stock and infrastructure, provides a mix of housing options, increases the rental housing supply in the county. We also see it as a less physical and visual impact than, say, a rental apartment buildings. And the units, really the intention here is that they be compatible with the look and scale of a single-family neighborhood. Here's some examples of secondary units, that, again, that can be attached or detached. So really quick, I'll just walk you through the development standards. Again, there are no changes in terms of the setbacks, height, lot coverage, and square footage limitations that are already existing in our code. The minimum lot area is reduced to 5,000 square feet. It used to be that you would have to have 1.5 times your base zone district size, so if you had a 6,000 square foot lot, you'd actually have to have 9,000 feet to be able to construct a secondary unit. So we're changing that, so that is just a standard 5,000 square feet allowance. Parking, we provided some clarification in parking, so that studios and one bedrooms require one stall for parking, and then anything above that would require two. There was one change to the location of these, in terms of, the Planning Commission is recommending that your board consider some more flexibility, that the unit can be attached or detached on any lot. It used to be that, in the code today, if you were under an acre, it would have to be attached to either a garage or a primary residence, and the commission has recommended that we modify that to provide for some more flexibility. In terms of the appearance, there is a provision in the code that is remaining where it needs to be architecturally compatible with and subordinate to the primary residence. And then only one unit, one second unit is allowed on a site. And then in terms of the unit size, the minimum is, square footage is 240 square feet, and the maximum is 1,200, and that's actually mandated by the state, 1,200 square feet. There is a provision in here for if, is deed restricted for affordability, you may build up to 1,200 square feet on any lot, on any lot regardless of its size. So it's an incentive, if you deed restrict the unit, you could go up to 1,200 square feet on any lot. And then also that you would be eligible for an exemption of certain development fees if it's restricted for affordability. Those do not include fire fees, fire impact fees, or school fees, but they do include building permit fees, traffic, impact fees, and parks and recreation fees. In terms of, of what that means for a number of fees, we're talking, we issue approximately 15 permits, single, excuse me, secondary dwelling units per year, and the average fees for those for parks, park and recreation, traffic and building is about 14,500. The total fiscal impact of this would be unknown, because we really don't know how many units would be deed restricted, but again, we typically see about 15 permits per year for secondary units that are issued. The waivers would result then to impacts to the budgets of the Department of Public Works and Facilities and the Building Division. We have worked with them on, on this code provision. We did present this to the municipal advisory councils, and I would say in general, received very broad support of this proposal. We also presented to the Planning Commission on November 5th, where the commission recommended that the board approve the zoning text amendment with one modification that I had mentioned before, related to the provision that a unit can be either attached or detached regardless of the size of the lot. And then the commission also took an informal action to recommend that the board consider a development fee exemption for deed restricted units. So with that, here's also an example of a floor plan. This is actually a multi-generational floor plan, where you can see, here you would have a, a second unit, but it's kind of interior to the house, and you could either enter through the house or through a private entry, so this would be a separate unit here. So with that, we recommend that your board adopt an ordinance amending Placer County Code, Chapter 17, Articles 17.04 and 17.56 pertaining to the secondary dwelling units, and Chapter 15, Articles 15.28, 15.34, and 15.65 pertaining to the secondary dwelling unit fee exemptions, and then also finding the ordinance statutorily exempt pursuant to 15282 of SEQA. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Jim, I think, has a question.
Yeah, thank you for the staff report. You mentioned the, the fee exemption. It says in the staff report that facility fees would be exempt on the deed restricted. Would that include sewer fees?
No, wouldn't it? It would include parks and recreational fees and traffic fees.
Well, it says facility fees, so I don't know what that.
Um, well, it's Department of Public Works and Facilities, but it's very specific to just the, now that they're combined, but it's very specific to the park and rec fee and the traffic fee that folks are required to pay when they come in to pull a permit.
So if someone built a, a secondary unit that wasn't attached, they would have to pay a sewer hookup fee?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then as far as a homeowner that wanted to build a secondary unit without the deed restriction, they would be responsible for all the fees?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this, I think, for the public hearing. This is a public hearing, anyone from the public could like to address the board on this item, please come forward.
Good morning Supervisors, Michael Garabedian, friends of the Norfolk. This secondary homes are a critical part of the county's housing stock, potentially invaluable and necessary for every family, any family, and for our low and moderate income households and workers. Under the state law, secondary homes have to be, they're ministerial, and so the, the way to manage them is what you have done and what you're making changes to, you're putting, have standards in the zoning text. Largely, it's the acreage limitation that affects, that we're, we're concerned about, not that it should be replaced, but that we need more than an acreage limitation as the primary vehicle. Now, now why do we need that? Basically, because the county is such a, has such a wide diversity of topography and housing situations, from modern suburbs and classic old neighborhoods, to forest areas and places that are, where you have highly visible county, unincorporated territory within the view shed, and highly visible in the Auburn State Recreation Area. The, the, what we think you need to do is to look, to, we're urging you, suggest staff look further at this issue. We think that each housing type of, each housing situation should be looked at for standards that are needed, really, for that neighborhood character. At the Planning Commission, this was discussed to some extent, but there wasn't a step to suggest how, what kind of standards, or looking into standards to, to maintain or contribute to, to keeping neighborhood character. At this, at the same time, on the other extreme, there are putting, putting secondary homes in highly visible areas or extreme fire hazard areas is something that, that also could be addressed. We don't have any, there's one specific suggestion, we hope that could be part of this consideration, and that is the idea that the size of the house, up to the 1,200 square foot maximum, the size could be a percentage of the existing home. We think that, that could be a valuable consideration to look at and consider. And we, we have an example of a situ, of a, a secondary home, the one on Eagle Ridge, that suggests various issues that we hope would be, could be, should I hand this out?
Give it to the clerk, please. Thank you.
We, we think this, this secondary home, which was built in a highly visible situation, obviously not a potential, I don't, I doubt for an affordable housing situation, but it has visibility issues, it has location issues because it's, it has a separate address on Ponderosa Way from the primary house that's on Eagle Ridge Road. So it's an example of a visual fire hazard and neighborhood impact issue that we hope, we hope you would suggest that we go farther to look at, and we would be glad to meet with and work with staff and planning and whichever departments are working on this. So we hope, we, we hope, we think that what we're suggesting would give comfort to people concerned about neighborhood character, because they're ministerial, and, you know, as we move forward and deal with secondary homes in the future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address this item?
Jean Wilson, 4301 Barton Road in Loomis, and I am one of the Loomis Planning Commissioners. We dealt with, with this several years back, and I would just like to comment on, caution you on making, making the secondary unit a proportion, size-wise, of the, of the, of the primary unit. We had a situation, and you probably have in the county, all kinds of sizes of houses, and we had a, a situation where people came in, they had an, an older cottagey, 800 square foot house, and we ended up giving them the 1,200 square foot unit, the lot was plenty, big enough. If we had made it a percentage, they could have only probably had really a, a very small secondary unit. So I just want to have you think about that when you consider that recommendation of the previous gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Susan Farrington, President of the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras, and as the President of the, the Homeless Council, I'm here to ask you to accept the recommendation of, of your planning folks. We believe that this is an opportunity to expand the housing inventory in a way that will certainly help us with our lack of affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ramona Brockman from Loomis, California, and just kind of hearing the issues today, it sounds like there's many different situations here in Placer County. The county is very unique, from, like I said, modern suburbs, all the way to places maybe in Loomis that have very small family farmsteads that were probably very small square footage, and I guess maybe the thing to make sure is that when you need to implement state mandates, that, you know, you very much consider the actual considerations for Placer County and how unique it is. Maybe in the Loomis situation, maybe it would have been wise or somehow to flip-flop it, that the smaller unit became, then considered the accessory dwelling unit, and the other unit that was larger was then considered the main home. You know, so I guess the flexibility would need to be built into this for each particular situation, because I truly understand the. situation, because I truly understand the housing need, and affordable housing need, and it's definitely a wise way to utilize land without adding extra infrastructure. Infrastructure's already there, so I totally understand the planning principles behind this. And the other question I have then is, you know, I don't know what kind of research has been done into other places that have had accessory dwelling unit ordinances on the books for many, many years. I worked on a place in Boulder, Colorado, that looked at accessory dwelling units, and this was 20-some years ago. Maybe Boulder County would be something to look at, to see how they've handled it. They also have urban areas all the way up through into the mountains and canyon lands. They have a lot of experience, I'm sure, dealing with how the accessory dwelling unit ordinance has gone throughout the years for them. And they were also looking at places like Berkeley, to get their experience that they had on the books ADUs for years before that. So I think it would be, you know, definitely wise to do a lot of research into this, to see how accessory dwelling units, and the demand for them, or the use of them, fares over time. You know, is it really just families that are asking for this, for extended family, or, you know, and Boulder started to become a money-making situation, which is, you know, supplemental income. So that was not the intended purpose of that accessory dwelling unit when it was enacted. So, you know, I think it just, it takes a lot of research, and looking at your county, and our county in particular, and how we can project out how it meets our needs. So I just wanted to comment on looking into those issues.
Thank you.
Good morning. Gary Mappe, I'm Appalate. I think I agree with almost every commenter here. It's a necessary thing that we're doing. Susan Farrington's comment about the need is definitely, definitely needed. Interesting that the size comparison is something I didn't think about until the one speaker brought up the 1,200-square-foot size versus the existing dwelling. I think that's probably a pretty significant comment. The purpose of my coming up here is to, two questions or comments. One would be with the big thing on Air and B vacation rentals, I'm sure, or would be concerned that that's something we looked at closely, that these don't evolve into an Air and B rental situation. So I don't know what kind of, maybe code compliance or enforcement's being looked at from that regard. The, so I lost my train of thought. Would be the size of the Air and B, and, you got me, Jim. But it was significant, oh. The Empower program. Financing is very important in my mind, and when you're dealing with an existing unit that has a loan in place, to get the financing to develop a secondary unit could be problematic, because you've got an existing lender, and then you might have subordination, or all types of different issues that would prevent that from being able to be put into place. And I am very supportive of Empower, and what I've seen it do with solar, and energy, and retrofitting for more of the green, call it LEED, or whatever you call those programs. So I would encourage Empower to maybe be a source of financing, if that's possible, or maybe it's already been discussed. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public down here? And then I see Ellie Abantall. We're ready for you. Can you hear us? Oh, we can't hear, oh, okay. Ellie, we can't hear you, but if you give us a few seconds, we'll fix it. Now we can. Now, yeah, now you're good to go. Thanks.
Thank you. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. I just want to make sure that it's clear to the public that this does not apply to Tahoe, and that in the future, after the area plan analyzes what they're going to do up in Tahoe, that we have a separate code that is not rolled into this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else up there who'd like to comment?
No, just me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there were several questions raised. Do you guys have any answers that you'd like to cover before we bring this back? And by the way, I'll close the public hearing.
Sure. So relative to the first comment about looking at, kind of further regulating where you could place secondary units, largely in relation, I think, to landscape on ridge lines and things like that, and the impacts on neighborhood character, that, we have actually met with that commenter previously, and feel that that is really outside of the scope of what is being proposed. We are implementing housing element policy. We believe that neighborhood compatibility has been addressed in the code, and feel that his changes are a little outside of what has, is being proposed in terms of implementation of the housing element. In terms of comments on the size, we are not changing the proportionality in terms of how big the unit can be on the size, so we're really just bringing forward the existing provisions that are in our ordinance now, in terms of the size of the unit relative to the size of the parcel. In terms of the question about the vacation rentals, this is something that we actually talked about internally. We had initially explored a provision that would require the units going forward, those being grandfathered would not be included in that, but units going forward, there would be a provision that would require a 30-day occupancy of those units. So that was initially explored. And after further discussion of that, we felt that by doing that, by including a provision, you are sort of indirectly regulating vacation homes. And there is a trend right now that we're seeing in local jurisdictions, where they're, you know, putting forth vacation rental ordinances. And so we feel that, you know, there are a lot of things to consider when putting forth a vacation rental ordinance, and that if the board desires us to do that, I think a more comprehensive approach to that type of ordinance should be taken, in terms of analyzing impacts. And so, again, if you apply a provision that requires a 30-day occupancy, or residential use only of secondary units, you're really indirectly, you know, regulating vacation rentals. And that wasn't really the intention of this proposal. And I think, I think that's it, unless there are any other...
Okay.
Oh, and Tahoe, I'm sorry. This does not apply to the Tahoe Basin.
Is there something we should know, EJ?
Of course, is there something you want to? We have Chris Schmidt here from our Planning Services. Do you have anything to add, Chris?
In the ordinance that's attached to the staff report, the 30-day restriction is in place. So it's letter J in the ordinance.
Thanks, Chris.
And the reason why this was put in there, in our original proposal by staff, was these were envisioned as permanent housing, and we didn't want it to be an Airbnb, and it become a neighborhood nuisance. But with consultations with county staff, it was felt that the Airbnb issue is best handled on a global measure, instead of just on secondary units. So take a big look at where they're appropriate, and handle it that way, instead of putting it in the second unit revisions.
Thank you. Okay, so the board is being asked to consider, or actually asked to adopt, the changes to the zoning text ordinance, and find that those changes are categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. It's a pleasure of the board.
Yeah, I'll move approval. I will comment on the issue of size and design, and all that kind of thing. You know, I think property owners are going to build things that are going to add value to their homes, and I don't think that they're going to build things that are going to make it more difficult for them to sell the home. So I'm pretty confident that, you know, the existing codes and covenants that the county has, in addition to any CCNRs that are established by, you know, local neighborhoods, we'll take care of that. And I think the primary consideration is going to be whether or not they're going to, this unit adds value to the overall property. And if, you know, unless they're fabulously wealthy, or independently wealthy, that's always going to be the bottom line for a property owner. So irrespective of whether it's the maximum 1,200 square feet, or whether it's 800, you know, I think it'd be who's them to build something that is compatible with the neighborhood, otherwise they're not going to be able to sell their property. So you're always going to get that one exception, like I think we've kind of seen here, where, you know, it may or may not, depending on who looks at it, fits that criteria. So based on that, I'll go ahead and second this motion.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We'll now take up our last department item, page 43, County Exec Administration, an update on the 2015-16 budget development overview. Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Excuse me, Andy. We have to wait a moment. Okay, all right.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andy Heath from the County Executive Office. What I'd like to do for you this morning is just give you an update on the fiscal year 2015-16, the current fiscal year's status of the fiscal situation in the county, and then look ahead to next year, which is what we try to do, but at this time, give you a synopsis of what we're seeing as part of the 2016-17 budget development, given that we have received the information from the departments recently. Looking at that, we'll go over the 2015-16 revenue expenditure projections for the county's main funds, which is predominantly the Public Safety Fund and the General Fund. Also look at the capital funds and the library fund. The General Fund and Public Safety Fund five-year strategic plan, strategic budget framework, where we're actually looking at some of the fiscal activity that we anticipate over the next five years in the county, specific to those funds, which is where the predominant share of operating resources are allocated. And then the fiscal year 2016-17 budget development process, we'll look at that as well. When we go through and actually look at putting the budget together, and more importantly, evaluate the budget throughout the year, and the actual activity that happens from the fiscal perspective, we always keep in mind your board's approved budget and financial policies that are part of the budget document, and have been approved over the course of time by your board on different occasions. Some of the things we look at are economic analysis and long-term planning, where we're looking at the modeling that we're doing. And we're looking at two-year modeling, where we look at the current fiscal year, to see where we're going to end up actually, and the coming fiscal year at a very intricate level, where we're doing a lot of analysis on exactly what may transpire in the coming year, based on what we know. And then we also have our five-year model that we put together, which obviously, for the right reasons, cannot dig down like we can in the current year, and maybe the coming year, but we do anticipate what's going to happen over those next three years as well, to kind of give us a gauge on what we might be able to do differently this year, knowing what might be coming in the future. Promotion of cost transparency is another area we look at, where we're really looking at all of the costs that are allocated across the county. Importantly, the A-87 costs, which are the indirect cost allocations, and making sure those costs are allocated to the right appropriations and the right programs. And then internal service funds, where departments use those services that are provided by countywide departments on an as-needed basis. And it's really important that we allocate those charges correctly, and charge the right amount, so that there aren't cost overruns in those areas, or more importantly, a lot of reserves that accrue. Review and understanding of budget variances, this is just a budget-to-actual exercise that we go through, to make sure that we're budgeting conservatively, which is important, but also not overly conservatively, where we're looking at revenues that may be more accurate, and more importantly, expenditures that should be budgeted at the expenditure level, giving the departments the full authority to spend their appropriation authority, where we're not having a lot of carryover fund balance at the end of the year. Establishment and maintenance of reserves is very important to the county as well. Your board does have a general contingency, economic contingency reserve policy of 5% of the general fund budget, and that budget right now is, or that amount is at 5% in the general fund. And it's also over 5% in the Public Safety Fund as well. So we pay very close attention to reserves, the general reserves, and other reserves, where we have capital reserves, infrastructure reserves, and program reserves, in some cases as well. And then development of a spending plan supported by sustainable resources. And this just goes to the core of using those ongoing revenue sources for ongoing expenditures, but more importantly, looking at one-time revenue sources for only one-time expenditures, and not really trying, trying not to allocate those one-time revenue sources towards those ongoing expenditures, and then getting caught when they don't come in anymore, having to fund something that requires an ongoing source. So all of this guides the budget process development, and more importantly, how we look at costs throughout the year. This is your board's budget for the current fiscal year. As you can see, we have an $816.7 million budget for fiscal year 2015-16. Majority of this budget is in the Public Safety and the General Funds, about 73.6% of it is in those two funds, indicated by the brown and the blue areas respectively. And we have some capital and infrastructure-related funds as well, that comprise 22.5% of the total budget, where you have Public Ways and Facilities Fund, or the Road Fund, where you'll find a lot of your road projects, bridges, those sorts of projects, and then the Capital Projects Fund, both of which are about $90 million. Built-in, this $816.7 million budget is a provision to reserves this year, where that $816 million includes a dedication of an amount that went to reserves of about $17 million. So the core operating budget is about $800 million, and your board elected to put $17 million in different reserves in the county in the current fiscal year. Just to give you an idea of where some of those reserves have gone, your board has approved already subsequent actions to the budget, a $440,000 in-home support services cash flow reserve that was approved, and also a $2 million set aside that was used for a payment of a sewer loan program that we wanted to do over the course of three years. Those two actions have happened this year already. We also have a $1.1 million Health and Human Support Cost Reserve that went in. This is the HHS reserve that we could typically fund if there are funds available at the end of the year. And right now, that reserve sits at $5.3 million. We also allocated $5.8 million towards the OPEB, which is the Other Post Employment Benefits for Future Retiree Costs associated with healthcare. We put $2.9 million into that reserve as well, which is being added to the SURBIT Fund, which is a Section 115 trust fund that's set aside and held solely for the payment of future retiree benefits related to healthcare. We also have another $2.9 million that we will be coming back to your board, to ultimately be allocated as part of the unfunded liabilities associated with retirement, where we're looking now at not just OPEB, the health benefits, but also the retirement benefits that are accruing, and the unfunded liability, and how the county may begin to get in front of that, to help stabilize retirement rates in the future, so that we don't see these enormous spikes moving forward. So the OPEB, the OPEB reserve will go right into the SURBIT, the... So the OPEB, the OPEB Reserve will go right into the SURBIT, the Calpers, or not the Calpers, the Retirement Reserve, will come back to your board subsequent to coming for the Finance Committee for recommendation on how we should best fund that and using what mechanism. We also have a $1.5 million Infrastructure Reserve that actually was set aside for infrastructure, and that reserve is now at $5.2 million. And then we added $2 million to the General and Economic Contingency Reserve to make sure that that reserve stays at that 5% level. We also added $1.2 million to the Open Space Fund, and then there's some other small reserves that were, that were funded as well. Looking at the General Fund and where we anticipate ending with the General Fund at the, at the end of the current fiscal year, as you can see, we do have the $437 million budget that was approved with final budget. That budget right now, from a revenue and carryover perspective, sits at about $439 million, and $417 million in expenditures are anticipated through the end of the year. The biggest changes between the final budget and, and some of the changes from a budget perspective in estimated actuals are carryover encumbrances and the small budget revisions that your board approves since final budget up, up to this point in time. We anticipate that there will be a carryover fund balance in the General Fund of about $21.8 million. This carryover fund balance is made up of some additional revenues above budget that we anticipate coming in, about $800,000 total there, mostly supplemental property taxes coming in a little bit more as, as the housing industry continues to sell more homes than we anticipate, and also some additional funding that's coming from the residual related to the former redevelopment agency, where that money, as former obligations get paid off in the redevelopment agency, that money accrues to all the taxing entities, applicable taxing entities in, in related tax rate areas, and the county is obviously a major one of those, so.
Andy, overall, the carryover fund balance is still coming down, is that?
A carryover fund balance, it's coming down a little bit compared to what it was last year, but again, I want to preface this because it's, this is really early, and typically what happens is, we'll do this report in February or March, and then by the time we get to June, July, September, when we bring final budget, we'll see that carryover fund balance go up. However, given what we've looked at so far this year, and given some of the things that we've implemented as part of the past budget, this last budget that we put together to mitigate carryover fund balance, I believe we'll have a lower carryover fund balance, which...
No, I appreciate that, because I think if there's anything in this budget that people always get tripped up on, it's the carryover fund balance and what does that pay for. So you've done a, a good job of explaining, you know, where, where that goes, but, but as always, you know, I think we need to continue to clarify what, what, what our goals are and what is actually happening with the fund.
Right. And the other component, so only $800,000 of the $21.8 million is related to revenue, above and beyond what we, what we think is going to come in. There's another $10 million of that $21 million that's related to salary savings. So basically, right now in the General Fund, we, we have 9.7% of the positions in the General Fund remain unfilled, and this is just normal. This is a normal course of business. It's very difficult to keep 1,600 positions in the General Fund filled at any given time. You can't have them all filled. So you're going to have that recurring amount of vacant funded positions that's always going to, going to happen. And then we're working to, to really look at the, the recruitment and retention efforts with human resources to make sure that we're hiring people to keep them as well. So another $10 million there. There's about $3 million in, in savings and non-salary related things for contracts, services, and supplies, and then the balance of it is about $6.2 million, and that's your unused contingency. So your board budgets a contingency reserve every year as part of the operating budget, 1.5% of, of the budget itself, the general fund budget itself, at $6.2 million, and hopefully we don't have to use that, and that's just your, your carryover fund balance that should be there for the next year, to the extent that you didn't use it. So that's where the $21.8 million comes from. That $21.8 million basically serves as the initial funding source for the coming year's budget. That's your first source. Looking over at the Public Safety Fund, you can see in the Public Safety Fund, we have a $162.9 million budget, and we anticipate about $3.3 million at the end of the year in, in Public Safety Fund carryover fund balance. One major thing that, that we did differently in the Public Safety Fund this year was, to this date, we have not trued up their general fund contribution. So at the beginning of the year, we estimated what that 46.83% amount was of discretionary general fund sources consistent with the five-year sustainability model that, that has been adopted by your board, looked at that 46.83% and funded that at the beginning of the year from a budgetary perspective. But as we all know, a budget is just as good as the day you make it, so things change over time. So ultimately, what has transpired is revenues may come in a little bit more, but we did not adjust that 46.83% yet. So $85 million is, is what is going from the General Fund to the Public Safety Fund, and we're using that as, as, we're keeping that static throughout the budget process this year to determine exactly where the Public Safety Fund is going in the coming years and in the future, and exactly what it might need. As you can see, we anticipate $3.3 million in carryover fund balance to accrue at the end of this fiscal year. And that's important because if we had trued up the Public Safety, or Public Safety Fund with the amount of additional general fund discretionary revenue that was received above and beyond the $85 million, they would have four more million dollars. So there'd be $4 million less in carryover fund balance in the General Fund, $4 million more in carryover fund balance in the Public Safety Fund, it would accrue basically to reserves. Public Safety Fund at this point in time has over $14 million in reserves because we did that true-up that one year a couple of years ago. So not that that's bad, or not that that's good, it's just, if these monies are available to serve the, the, the programs in the Public Safety Fund and the General Fund alike, keeping in mind that the Public Safety Fund receives 55% of its resources from the General Fund contribution. So it's real critical to watch where that General Fund contribution is going with the Public Safety Fund. $3.3 million is made up again of about $800,000 in additional revenue accruing from Public Safety Sales Tax and additional AB 109 true-up money that's coming in, $800,000 in salary savings, so far less in salary savings as the, as the Public Safety Fund, Sheriff, DA, and probation, they're filling their positions and they're, and they're retaining people in those positions, and then $1.7 million in contract supplies and materials. So that's what the Public Safety Fund is anticipated to look, look like at the end of the year, about $3.3 million in carryover fund balance.
But remind me again, Andy, is there a minimum amount of reserve that we have to maintain on an annual basis for the Public Safety Fund? Or is that part of the overall reserve that, that we place in the General Fund?
It's partly the overall reserves, but I would look at the, at the Public Safety Fund as a, just a, an offset of the General Fund, because of the amount of funding that it receives specifically from the General Fund. So if your board has a policy of maintaining a minimum level, or trying to attain a minimum level of 5% of operating expenditures in your General Fund, I would add the Public Safety Fund to that and make sure you have that level. And I think that that would be a very prudent reserve to have, and you do have that now in both the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund alike. Just very briefly touching on some capital and infrastructure funds, as you can see, in, we've got a $92.3 million Capital Fund budget and a $91.5 million Road Fund budget, a lot of money going towards capital and infrastructure activities this year. Big, biggest project is probably the SMD-1 Regional Sewer Project. We also have the Auburn Animal Shelter, trail expansions, the Unravelment Court down at the South Placer Justice Center, Crime Lab feasibility study, which is going on right now. All of these things are, are budgeted and appropriated in the Capital Projects Fund. In the Public Ways and Facilities and Road Fund, we have the North Phase of the Auburn-Folsom Road Widening, an important project, continuing the project up in the Tahoe area with the Kings Beach Core, Commercial Core Project, and then just the ongoing continued maintenance for the over 1,000 miles of roadway that we have in the unincorporated county. Importantly, just want to note that in the, with, for the roadways, your board did allocate on a one-time basis, $2 million extra dollars to, from the General Fund to the Road Fund this year to address overlay and, and road issues, and that's on top of the $3.8 million that, that you, your board typically allocates as part of the ongoing budget process. Got a slide to demonstrate what that looks like in a little bit. Looking at the Library Fund, I wanted to put this fund in here, just to kind of give your board a gauge of where we're going with the Library Fund. I'm going to go down this chart as I explain it. With the carryover fund balance, and with the Library Fund, this assumes a static delivery of services with the, to the library consistent with what it is today. So there's really no closures built in to this model per se, no significant changes in service, other than those things that have already been started by the library consistent with implementing their strategic plan, the majority of which is looking at their staffing model and transitioning from an extra help model to a full-time employee model and accruing the benefits to go with that as part of the system as a whole. Carryover fund balance is anticipated to be, in the coming fiscal year, about $437,000. This $437,000 is mostly because of unfilled vacant positions. So you've got funded positions in the library that just had not been filled. They have been filled now. Predominantly, there were two library services managers positions that have recently been filled, but because we have all those months that they weren't filled, you accrue all that vacancy savings, and then there's some other vacancy savings in there as well. But the majority of that carryover fund balance is related to vacancy savings. You have revenues that are anticipated to be six, just over $6 million, and you can see that's down from the $6.4 million. The biggest change there is, as you may recall, your board allocated $400,000 of additional funding from the General Fund to the library as part of the final budget to address sustainability, making sure they have enough money to get through the year, and then also to begin to create a capital reserve for radio frequency identification device for the library system, RFID. Expenditures, you can see rise about $300,000 in '16-17 to $6.5 million, and then continue to rise to $7.6 million in 2019-20. Majority of these, of these increases are due primarily to staff. There's about a million dollar increase in staff costs between '16-17 and, and fiscal year 1920, predominantly because of Calpers and retirement costs, which we, which are about $700,000 of that. I have a slide that's going to kind of give you an idea of what this looks like countywide as well, but it's really important to know that because the library's budget is, the majority of that budget is staff costs, as those staff costs increase, the benefit costs increase, you're going to see that increase as well accrue in the out years. And then looking at kind of where we're going to end up, you can see that next year, we're projecting pretty much a balanced budget, an $83,000 deficit in '16-17 is pretty close to being balanced, but in the out years, you can see that it starts to grow a lot more, that you have that deficit. Obviously, my office is working very closely, the County Executive Office is working very closely with the Library Department to address these sustainability issues, and as they progress down the path of implementing their strategic plan, we are considering additional funding sources that, that may accrue, or alternative service delivery models that, that, that may ultimately end up saving money as well. So that's where the Library Fund is. This is the five-year model, and in the staff report, I included the five-year models for both the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund, and a couple of things to point out here, from a, from a revenue perspective, modest revenue increases are, are budgeted and forecasted in the months moving, in the years moving forward, and you can see the gray bars there where it says total general fund revenue and total general fund use of funds. That's kind of the sustainability bar. So if you compare the numbers in those, in those gray bars, you can see what we're anticipating coming in in core revenue, and what we're anticipating coming in, or what we're anticipating using of that core revenue as expenditures, and the variances. So in '16-17, which is the second column of numbers there, you can see we're about $4 million different, and then it, it stays about the same all the way through. The biggest change, again, in, that we're doing in these, in this model, as from previous models, is we have not increased the general fund contribution to the Public Safety Fund, because we want to see where that gauge is with the, when we put these models together to see where the Public Safety Fund is going. So if you look at, in the expenditure column, the fourth expenditure down says contribution to general safety, that is pretty, it's, it's the same number all the way across, so that is not increasing. Coming down through this, you can see that in the current fiscal year 15-16, we're anticipating a $21.8 million county bottom line, that's that carryover fund balance, that then carries over into '16-17 as the starting source. Moving across in '17-18, '18-19, and '19-20, you can see we have less and less reliance on carryover fund balance built in, where we're moving from $21.8 to $15, to $14, and then to $13 million as that source. So we're trying to look at our budget practically and really get a good gauge on if we are successful in reducing the amount of carryover fund balance that's accruing each year, what does that look like in terms of the model? Another area in here to look at is the contribution to reserves. You can see the $12.9 million that your board allocated this year, that I previously went over, and then in the next two years, we've just included the $2 million to fund the remainder of those sewer loans that your board adopted this year for the payment of this year's portion. So we have to budget that each year to the extent that we can, so. $4 million in loan write-downs remains there. So General Fund, keeping the Public Safety Fund contribution static, looks fairly sustainable moving forward.
Excuse me, Andy. Andy, excuse me. Back up to the contribution to reserves, that goes from 12 down to 2 and 2 and then 0.
Right.
It's part of that driver and attempt, I'm assuming that our contribution to the contingency reserves has to go up in terms of absolute dollars if our budget's going up to retain the 5% fixed.
That, that's not built into this yet, so we, we could, we could build that in. Yes, it should.
So this does not include that, or not, not an attempt to do that?
To the extent you want to have that 5% level, that number would go up.
Got it. Yep, thanks.
Just a little bit. This is just a synopsis of the information that you just saw in the General Fund on the bottom line, so you can see in the General Fund in that, in that top table there, the projection of the amount that's available. And then what I did was I took the information out of the Public Safety Fund, which has a similar model that I didn't put as part of this presentation, but is in your staff report, and then put the bottom line for the Public Safety Fund as well, keeping in mind again, this, the contribution from the General Fund is static all the way through $85 million. So you can see that the Public Safety Fund next year has about a $9.2 million gap that would typically be funded with a portion of the 46.83% discretionary revenue from the General Fund. But in the net, you can see that in '16-17, it's about $6.3 million positive. '17-18, pretty much flat, and then it becomes negative in '18-19 and '19-20. So this is the combined impact in the five-year model of what we're looking at moving forward for an existing level of service, and that's really important to, to know, is that these models don't assume any expansion of services that are currently being delivered in Placer County, just assume static level of services. So to the extent services grow or programs get added, that adds to the expenditure side of the budget. In the bottom table, what I wanted to show your board is some of the monies that are allocated as part of the discretionary base versus those that are allocated through an additional contribution, to the extent they're available in carryover monies. So for example, in fiscal year 15-16, in the current budget, your board allocated $3.7 million of Road Fund money, $4.5 million of Capital Fund money, $600,000 into the Library Fund, and this is just for the A-87 costs in, in the librarian. Fire Fund gets $1 million, just over a million, and the Debt Service Fund to pay the county's debt, $3.2 million. These are amounts that are built into the budget each year, and will fluctuate based on the way they're built into the budget each year. But to the extent funds are available at the end of the year, your board pursuant to recommendation by staff typically approves additional contributions to other programs, activities, or reserves. So in 15-16, your board approved $10 million of additional funding to these similar programs. Road Fund got an additional $2 million that I talked to you about. Capital Fund got $6.7 million, where we addressed the deferred maintenance activities that we talked about at Challenges and Choices last year, and some of the, some other capital projects as well, that got specific amounts of money from carryover fund balance at the end of last year. Open Space Fund got $1 million, and then the library got that additional $400,000. That $10 million in that green box in the bottom table is, is what's unknown for the coming year, and that is what is typically funded to the extent we have additional carryover fund balance available after all recommended programs and services are funded as part of the base budget. So I just wanted to call that out to your attention. That's kind of what's, what's at stake right now in the coming fiscal years is an ability to fund that to the extent carryover fund balance is available. So this year, for those funds alone, $23.3 million went in in 15-16 to the So this year, for those funds alone, $23.3 million went in in '15, '16, to those funds other than public safety and the general fund, so, point that out. This is a chart that shows what, in my opinion, is probably the most significant cost driver in the county's budget. Not so much salaries, salaries are negotiated and typically paid at a market rate, but it's the unpredictable nature of the CalPERS costs, the retirement costs, and the health costs, as we, as we look forward. You can see in the solid blue and green area, you'll find the actual costs for health insurance and CalPERS retirement respectively, over the last approximately 10 years or so. And they've gone up slightly. However, when you look at the shaded area, and the reason for the big jump in the shaded area is those, the years that we have finished are actuals, the years that we have not finished are based on budget, which include all funded positions. So, actuals have a, have a portion of salary savings that accrue to it, some of which is going to be in CalPERS and health, whereas what we're budgeting in the future do not, so that's why you see that jump. However, what you do see is an increase in the overall amount. Right now, countywide, PERS, we pay about $47.2 million anticipated for the coming fiscal year for CalPERS, and then in the health insurance, it's just under $30 million for the year. So, $76 million goes to those two components alone, which is about 13.5% of the operating budget. So you can see that it's, it's a big number. It's a very big number. Just wanted to point that out, that this, this is built into the model, but it's very, very speculative on what these costs are going to be in the future. These costs assume a lot of different things. CalPERS, they assume that that plan, those two plans are going to earn 7.5% a year. Last year, they earned 2.4%. Similarly with the OPEB, the OPEB assumes that we're going to earn 7.33% on the assets that we have. Last year, it earned 0. So you can see there's a wide fluctuation of things that are going on, subject to economic conditions, and, and the, what's happening in the market. So we pay very close attention to, to these two numbers. Looking at '16, '17 budget development overview, some of the things that we're building into the budget development, continued modest discretionary revenue growth, talked about that a little bit. Don't believe that we're going to be receiving the 7% or 10% increases in assessed valuation that we've received over the last couple of years in the coming year. We've budgeted a modest 3.5% growth in property tax. The state COLA factor that's built onto the Prop 13 value each year came in at about 1.5%, I believe, so we'll at least get that, but there are certain prop eight, properties on the books as well, which are those properties that are valued below Prop 13 base that can come up, consistent with market conditions. Service delivery models that recognize short and long-term cost drivers, we really want to pay attention to exactly what it costs to provide services, especially those services that are being proposed as new services for the future. Costy methodologies, looking at those, I talked about that. This year, we're going to look at some expanded information with the capital and infrastructure projects. We will be bringing back to your board, before the adoption of the proposed budget, the capital facilities financing plan that your board last saw in, in 2011. We're bringing that back, and that's turning out to be a very robust and comprehensive document with a lot of capital and infrastructure projects on it. So we'll be having a conversation with you regarding what's on tap for that. Succession planning remains, remains huge in the county, making sure that we build the bench and have the resources behind those individuals that, that are leaving with a lot of knowledge and a lot of tenure, and making sure that we can provide a seamless transition of providing services from a staff perspective. Focus reduction of carryover fund balance, we talked about that, and then with priority based budgeting, what you'll see in the '16, '17 budget is a full costing of all the 399 programs that have been identified in the county. So, begin to start having conversations around those, those areas as well. This is what the budget looks like so far, and keep in mind that budgets were due in the county executive office on March 1st. Our staff is diligently reviewing those budgets now, a lot of budgets to review. As previously mentioned, and it's focusing on the general fund and the public safety fund here, you have a $21.8 million general fund projected carryover fund balance, $3.3 million public safety fund, total of about $25.1 million. The net county cost for both of those funds combined is about 18.4. What this is, is this is what we sent out, this is what the cost is, that is going to be needed from that 25.1 to balance the budget, which leaves about $6.7 million in both those funds combined, as the net carryover fund balance is available for, at least at this point in time, it's available for looking at supplemental requests that have come in from the departments across the county. Right now, the unanalyzed supplemental requests in the general fund and public safety fund combined are about $15.3 million, so you can see that we've got a lot of work to do, to balance this budget, and to really look at some of the things that we're bringing back to your board, consistent with what we've heard you discuss at some of the prior forums that we've had, namely the, the priorities workshop, and some of the things that we've discussed in supplemental requests there. This is a synopsis of the supplemental request by fund. You can see that there are countywide, about $40 million in supplemental requests from a net county cost perspective, majority of which are in capital improvements. There's a lot of capital on tap that, to the extent funding is available, are requested to be funded, and these, this is just the cash portion. So to the extent your board desires to do any capital projects using a financing mechanism, that's outside of this model, and wouldn't impact that $18 million, per se. Some of the emerging critical issues, and these are, this is what we discussed with your board in January, when we were in Tahoe, and what you'll find is, a lot of the supplemental requests that we have received do incorporate some of these things, as we expected. Parks master plan, future of the fairgrounds, medical marijuana, community choice aggregation, economic developments, significant amount there, the PaaS replacement, the financial system replacement, homelessness and housing, homelessness and housing, service delivery models, particularly down at the jail area, the crime lab in the morgue, South Placeta Jail transition, and in the eastern Placeta County levels of service. So there's a lot of supplementals that resonate around these, around these areas that, that we have to vet through before we bring them back to your board for recommend, recommended approval. Some of the budget preparation items that are coming up as we bring the proposed and ultimately the final budget back to your board, we do anticipate on May 3rd, a month and a half from now, coming back to your board with something similar to what we did last year, that we heard you'd like to see when we were at the Tahoe meeting in January, which is the Challenges and Choices update, an update to that process for '16, '17, as we prepare the budget. So we plan on bringing that back on May 3rd. The proposed budget is scheduled to come to your board on June 7th, and then the public hearing and the adoption of the final budget will be on September 13th. As I mentioned, we also plan to bring back the capital facilities financing plan, somewhere in there, prior to the adoption of the final budget, and, and bringing that forward. So with that, I'll stop, and I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions from board members, comments? Anyone from the pub, I'm sorry?
No, I just want to say quick.
Oh. Anyone from the public question, comment on the budget? Okay, this was just an update, so we don't have to take any action unless there were any comments, and there weren't, so thank you very much, it was great, very important, and I appreciate it. Okay, the board will now adjourn into closed session.
And in closed session, the board will have a conference with legal counsel to discuss one item of existing litigation, California Clean Energy Committee versus County of Placeta.
It's only 10:20.
Five minutes.
The board has just returned from closed session, and county council will report out.
In closed session, the board heard a report of the final conclusion of the litigation in California Clean Energy Committee versus County of Placeta, no action was necessary or taken.
The committee has adjourned.